Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome to the Town and Pownell Select Board Meeting. October 26, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Board member roll call.
Angie Rowling.
Bob Jarvis.
Brian Harris.
Jamie Percy.
Mike Gardner. We'll call Stan for the pledge of allegiance, please. Can you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public, for which it stands, one nation, united in God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of agenda, public comment, approval of minutes, warrants, correspondence, excess weight permits, updates from town officials, excuse me, tree removal at the Center Street Cemetery, health officer and E-91 coordinator laptop purchase, choose possible name for new lane off of Middle Pownell Road, community use of town office space, discussion continued, conservation commission initial discussion, social service appropriations, town warning and ballot placement policy, executive for personnel, executive personnel zoning administrator, executive personnel, public comment adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, any additions, corrections? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Public comment, any public comment here?
No hands up.
No hands? Okay, approval of minutes, October 19, 2023, special select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? additions? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, abstain.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Warrants, counts payable October 27, $26,616.53.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Payroll, October 27, $10,509.67.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Do we have any correspondence there?
Not today.
No correspondence, excess weight permits?
None of those either.
None of those either, awesome. Updates from town officials?
Um, well, I have one. We received a $5,000 grant from the collaborative um, to install a kitchen in the old town office, so it's a step in the right direction. I have a few other other grants I need to uh, hopefully get before that happens, but that's pretty much all I have, exciting news.
Um, the health officer has been pretty quiet, not coming forward whenever it is um, since last Tuesday. It's only the same thing, just the permit process that's going on on normal, everyday operations.
You want to have Tom give his quarterly update note?
Yeah, you want to give your um, town official, or Tom is the you want to come up to the table, please?
I'm not sure if I do.
Do you all have a packet of files? Get one sent to him?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, we started on this uh, this packet of mine. Basically, it's the Southern, Biden County Solid Waste Alliance. And uh, we've, we've been able to get the household hazardous waste permanent facility up and get it running and so forth. And it's really come a long ways, you know? And Scott Grimland really should be uh, he gives one my kudos because he kind of walked in the middle of this thing. Michael started and then he retired and Scott got it. So basically, this is the notes and the minutes and so forth. If you go back to uh, where the numbers start, okay? Yeah, there's things in here. This is what we're looking at, bills and so forth. And if you look at the uh, allocation by town, you know, we're at 9% of the allocation and so forth. So our annual budget was 19,615 and total was 18,274.47. So we're like uh, $1,200 under what they had, we had allocated through the end of the year. This was a very good thing, you know, we've been able to do that, but it's steadily, you know, increasing each year because we're not getting quite the grants and things that we have. But now, we do have one grant that's coming up here, I'll show you this, which is really kind of interesting. Go to the following page. This is the, this is the spreadsheet on what the costs were for the household hazardous waste facility. And the whole thing, you know, comes down to uh, 106,739. And the A&R expected reimbursement is 64,000, okay? So what happens is, go to the next page, you'll see that the thing that Scott sent me uh, yesterday. We got, we got a refund on this because of the grant coming in. So he's saying that our, our refund on it is $7,246.63. Now, what we've left it up to, we kind of did it up to towns, towns, you know, each town is different. Do we want to leave this in? Just leave it set there or reduce our uh, our payments next year for the solid waste alliance? Or we want to refund it and we have to pay the things back? So that's
So can you, Tom, just can you point that out for me again because I'm not seeing this, I'm
It's on this email right here. See that?
Oh, okay.
Alright.
Oh, alright, I missed it, Tom, I'm sorry, I see this. Yep, yep.
Scott sent me this yesterday.
Okay, sorry.
Because he didn't really have it. My first talk to him, he said, he said, you know, it's still kind of up in the air and I don't know if this is going to be actual, you know, you know, in stone, but it's going to be pretty close. So I mean, if you want to, just leave that in there and then we can take this amount off of the alliance when we go to show our uh, things for the, the budget next year and reduce the budget by 7,200. I mean, it's up to you guys. You'll have to decide that. We'll discuss that in budget time. But it's certainly an option for us. Or whether we want to have it, have it just returned to us. Okay, they'll do it either way. So it's not really a problem and uh, I knew we were going to get some back. I didn't know we were going to get that much back. But the page before that has this pie chart on it.
Yeah.
Alright, you'll see it down here. Uh, we are 9% of the population. This is what was done up to uh, September 11. And panel did 11% of the household hazardous waste facilities. We have 9% of them. So I'm, I'm happy with that. The people are using it, you know, and uh, I've been passing that to leaflets to everybody that asks anything about it. I have a stack of them right there on the desk and I'm passing them out. And then these other, these are just pictures of the units and what the other things we have in there.
So, Tara, would you, before we get too carried away, will you put the 7,246,000 radar for the budget with Ellen? So that we can discuss that with her?
Yeah, because I'm not sure if it makes more sense to put it back in now.
Right.
Yeah.
When we, yeah, the budget discussion, I just want to add, Ellen, add any input on that?
Yeah.
You know, what the best thing for us?
Definitely.
This is, this is why you guys get the big bucks, you know? So, now, the next thing we have on here is uh, the thing about Discover Books. And what this is, is a program that I know we have a lot of books in the swap shop. And some have been there a long time and are getting old and so forth, and we have to put them in the to get them to, to put them in paper and stuff to dispose of them. And we're paying for that. This, we can put them in there, or if people have good books that they want to donate things, they, they do either one. I mean, they'll take them and it's no cost to us whatsoever. They put a bin in, they'll have their near the propane bins with the bins we have for the clothing and so forth. We'll just send it in there and they'll come and take care of it. And uh, they'll come in, unlock it, take the thing out. It's all waterproof, waterproof and everything. And I think it'd be something that would be, be huge to us to do. Uh, this way we, some of the books and so forth are going to get reused. And you know, the older ones, they're going to really make sure they're safe there and cycle. No cost to us, we just need the space. We have the space there. We have plenty of space for it. So it'd be right up there near where we have that by the metal dumpster and the oil.
So this will be, this will be at our?
Our facility.
At our facility.
Yeah, this is, this is one that we're going to be doing, you know, for the for the, go to the community basically and uh, it's going to help us out in the long run too. So, I, I'm sure we should do it. I mean, that's my recommendation. Is that okay with you folks?
Yeah.
Let's make a motion.
Make a motion that we uh, start with the Discover Book Program at the transfer station.
I'll, I'll call Paul tomorrow and uh,
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Any more discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. You got it, Tom.
Okay, very good. Now, the next thing we've got going on here, these are tonnage uh, from 22 to 23. One of my quarterly reports. This is where I base my quarterly reports upon. So as it comes out, we're only about two, two tons different from one year to the next for the quarter. Which is, you know, pretty consistent. Uh, we're two and a quarter tons more this year than we were last year. So I mean, that's, that's just showing us that, that things are, you know, going along, you know, pretty much as is. And then we have the thing here for the uh, I've got my quarterly POU reports and so forth. And we'll see how much we, difference we have from last year's. So, what we have here, we have uh, July, we took in $19,450.50. And then, July, we took uh, August, we took $14,249. And then, last month, we took $9,373.50. And that's all because a lot of the people are buying their permits, you know, on time and they, then they slowly trickle in and whatever about this and I, I go through here, you know, when I was doing some of this stuff, I found some people that I know that haven't paid and so forth, so you know, next time you come in, how about bring in an extra $50, you know, you get your permit, so allow you to do it again, you know, and so forth. You know, you do it kind of nicely, but uh, so these are all increases over last year by a good bit.
About how many permits is um, so we'll think about the end.
I
The amount that
I'll tell you what, when, at the end of the, at the end of the quarter, we were about 12 behind last year. But the, but the increase was way, way ahead. You know, the increase, we were 12 behind. It was 400, 437 to 449, I think, something like that. There's, I mean, it was in 12. And it's, it's still creeping up and we're still a little behind as of last year, but it's not significant. I mean, it's uh, you know, the percentage is really not, not that bad. And we're getting a lot of uh, new people moving in, of course, you know, people move out. So uh, we're reusing some of the old numbers and stuff and people have to film that and I got to change all the stuff on the computer. You know, my spreadsheets on this, you know, and the, the addresses, the phone numbers and everything we keep for the folks. But uh, you know, things are going pretty well and you know, compared to, to last year, we have a last page, very last page here, uh, you know. So these, these are, these are yearly totals for revenue on the top part. I decided to throw that in there. 22 was down, but then that was, you know, 21 and 22 kind of COVID years, so you know, there was a lot of difference. And last year, you know, in 23, you know, we jumped up quite a bit. And this year is going to be quite a bit more. Yeah.
So, so this bottom line right here, this $93,000 for 2023, that's current up to date, but not the entire fiscal year?
No, that's, that's, that was last year, 2023.
Alright, okay.
These are the end years. The ones 2021, 2122, okay? This, this is, this is, these are the numbers.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was
Yeah, these are, these are the numbers from uh, June 30.
June 30, okay.
We closed it off.
Yeah, alright.
Right here is the thing about the tonnage, the total rate there is a 2.25 ton difference, you know, over the three months. And the income compared to last year in July, last year was uh, well, this year was 19,450, last year was 17,284. August was 14,249.
Right.
To 11,598. And then we get to 93,7350 to 7502, which, which comes into 43,000
Right.
First quarter. And last year's first quarter was 36,385, so it's a net increase of 66,877.5. Which I think is pretty much on, on target from what we were talking about when we did the things. I, I think that we're going, it's going to be very close to like the 17, you know, because you start out with this and you know, you don't have to get, you get 3, 4, 3, 4, something like that. And we should be, should be reasonably close to it. You know? But it's, you know, all in all, I think it's working out pretty well. You know, the numbers are encouraging, you know, to me anyhow. And uh, so we're doing that. Now, I have one, one other thing I want to bring up. I didn't put this down. We had uh, we have a new, we have a new engineer coming in from Stan Tech for the closed landfill. And she said she couldn't get a draw on the one well that's over by the tires. There's one right behind there at the end of the swap shop, back in the weeds there a little bit. And she said she could not get it. She said the thing was messed up. There was a check valve. It should have been down at the bottom, but it wasn't in the bottom and so forth. And I don't know, Rasha always got the stuff there, but she didn't. And she was here last week too. So I'm not so sure what we're going to have happen. Whether they can somehow reuse that well, pull the stuff up or not, or if they're going to have to grow another 40-foot well.
Do they have an internal, that's line, or a case?
PVC, I think it's like an inch and a half PVC down inside the casing.
Right, that's what I was going to say. It's already a case, but then it's
But she said there's a check valve in there. She said she could get it taped down by it, but she couldn't get any test tubes or anything, you know, get any line down there to get any water out. So I don't know. It's, it's uh, it seems a little odd to me that, you know, it worked all these years and now it doesn't work, but I think we have somebody who may not be as experienced at doing these things. She's just out of college, we quit on it.
But that, that's the only well they had problems with?
Well, she had, she had the wrong test equipment for other ones, so she had a couple other ones to do, but uh, I mean, it's just, but we had things, we had things going just like this, you know? For years, all the time I was out there with, when we had Rasha, but he, he quit some or retired or whatever. But he's no longer with the firm. So this is what, this is what we're dealing with.
So before um, they suggest us doing another well, can't we ask for a different person to
Well, that's, that's exactly what I'm, I'm going to do. I'm going to say, you know, can we have somebody else come take a look at this?
Correct.
You know, or somebody can contact Rasha and see how he did it because it always seemed to work for him. And uh, you know, he never seemed to have any problems with, with any stuff because I saw him bringing the stuff out, you know, he, he got water out of him and he saw the test things because you can see him right there from the office. You know, all the times that he did it.
It just seems a little odd.
Yeah, I did, that's exactly my, my point too. So, but I just, I just wanted to bring this up. I think that, you know, and here's the thing, I'm going to have to start doing the uh, recertification. We have to start here pretty directly, so I'll get it all pushed out at the end and get it in a timely fashion for recertifying the transfer station and recertifying that, because that hasn't been done every five years. And uh, you know, we just did it, but to tell you what, it's a lot of work and we've had some changes. We've had the, we've had the solar panels put in since the last certification. We've had the the animal control put in there since the last certification. So we have uh, we have some differences we have to get put in there. And I'm sure if I talk to Bill, I'll have him get some aerial photographs and we could just blow those right in with the stuff and they can see everything. It's a lot better than the old aerial maps, anyhow, by long shot. So if we could do something like that, we will. And uh, we got a thanks from the Department of Agriculture again this year for allowing them to do testing on mosquitoes. And that's why I don't keep all the tires in the tire shed, because we have, we keep a bunch out there for mosquitoes. They do the testing. They've been doing it uh, seven years now. They didn't do it the first year I was here. After that, done the last seven years.
I would think there's plenty of mosquitoes over there without tires being out there. I lived over there for 30 years when I first got married.
I think you're probably right.
I'm pretty sure.
However, what we, what we have, we have there is really the, the furthest, furthest, most south tire pile in the state.
I don't understand. I, I understand.
I understand what you're pointing to.
I live there. There's plenty of mosquitoes.
And I thought, oh, we got some west now. But I don't know if they've ever found west now. They've never told me. I asked them and they said, no, I said, I don't know. I just send them samples in. You know, but I've never really asked and so forth. But uh, but they do, they do get some mosquitoes there for sure. You know?
Does anybody have any questions for Tom?
I'm good.
I'll, I'll stop overlooking that well.
Yeah, if you'd like to. One over Saturday.
So.
You know, we'll be there.
Good.
Keep being
Are things looked at, Tom, you know, as far as I'm sending the report? Is, is good, things are projected where we, we're hoping, I think, you know?
Well, we're headed, we're headed there. I can't say we're going to make it, but you know?
We're, we're headed. We're at least headed in the right direction.
It's, it's, it's definitely, it's definitely an improvement. Alright, and I'm, I'm pleased with it.
Always a plus.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Welcome. Uh, tree removal at Center Street Cemetery.
Okay, so as you all know, we got an estimate from Greater Heights for 38.65 to take a tree down by the cemetery. Um, but given the price, I'm thinking maybe we should go for some more estimates and I just kind of wanted to see what the board thought.
I think that's within our town policy that um, that we'd get, send it out for uh, estimates.
Okay, one second.
We'll wait for Tara to come back.
Nope, that's fine.
That way we don't have to repeat ourselves.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
But yes, it is within our town policy that we, we get three estimates.
You want a motion or can I just recommend that?
I don't think we need a motion. That, that is within the town policy, so I think we just reach out for I mean, we put out an RFP
Yeah.
For this, kind of.
We could, but it, because it's under the threshold, it's
Right, it's under the threshold. Let's just do some estimates and see where we're standing.
Okay.
Okay. Health officer and E-91 coordinator laptop purchase.
Um, so as you guys are aware, we are getting ready to hopefully, well, we did just hire Samantha. Um, getting ready to do the paperwork and stuff with her for the state because she's been on vacations last week. Um, so she'll be in tomorrow.
Yeah.
And we're going to, we are going to need a computer to set her up with. And I recently got a request from Priscilla, our E-911 Coordinator. Um, she's having a lot of difficulty doing some of the, some of her tasks on her home computer. Um, so I think it's completely reasonable to purchase two new computers. Um, the ones that we had extra from our previous health officer, they've been given to other people. I gave um, Leonard one for animal control stuff and I gave one to um, uh, Eddie, Asgucci, a constable, to use for his um, his video camera things wouldn't transfer to his computer, so it just made more sense if they took those ones. Um, so IT gave me, this is their best um, best layout. So for both computers, it's uh, $1,979.10 and it covers the warranty and the three-year support. And we have that in the budget, um, in the equipment maintenance budget.
That was my only question.
Very good.
Only a change in motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Uh, choosing a possible name for a new lane off of Middle Pownell Road.
Uh, so Priscilla came to me. There's a road that will now have three houses on it off of Middle Pownell. So it'll be considered a lane. The three names that she came up with that are not used in neighboring towns and we don't have any other road names or a lot of road names, I guess, that start with A. So she chose Aska, Asbury or Asher. So once you decide on a name, then I'll start the rest of the process, um, warning a public hearing and that stuff.
What's the board's pleasure? My personal, my personal opinion was Asher Lane.
That's what I wrote down, Asher. I thought it just was simple and easy.
Yeah. It sounds simple and easy to me. Um, are there standards around? I don't know what the standards are for naming.
Um, yeah, so Priscilla is aware of all the standards and she kind of checked in. She's the one who called the neighboring, or checked the neighboring towns and, and did all that process. Um, but previously, when you, the last road naming, I guess, process that they went through, Linda was here and so we, I worked with Priscilla to figure out what the process is and all of that, so it should be good to go with a public hearing after you name it.
Is there any meaning behind those names, other than they start with A?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Nope. No. It's not like one of the three names of the people that live on the lane?
No, I don't believe so, no.
I just saw Asher something.
Any other opinions on?
Oh, Asher's flow is better.
Flow is better, yeah.
That's awesome. Yeah, I'm fine with that. All in agreement, motion?
So moved, same at Asher Lane?
Wait a second. Alright, I'll second. I thought, I was waiting for Jamie to do it. He looks at me like, what are you waiting for?
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Mike, aye. Peter, use of town office space, discussion continued?
Um, I brought this one back really quick because I had a lot of notes and things to look into, but not, not a whole lot of um, direction other than that. And I wasn't sure what you all wanted to see changed or added on that policy.
Before we move forward, have we had another abatement to make sure that the air quality is okay in there?
I think that's this town office, not
Oh, which town office you're talking about? This one or that? Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, but it will apply to all of them and yes, I would have that re
Okay, I'm sorry.
Retested before we use it.
I wasn't quite sure where we were at.
No, but it will apply across the board for all of our facilities.
Right, okay, sorry. No big deal.
What's your pleasure on this?
Um, Bob, did you have any concerns that you wanted specifically addressed before we bring it back?
Um, I'm sorry, what are we?
The facility use agreement, like, we talked about um, you know, would we have fees? Would we
Oh, yeah.
Limits and rules, you know, there was all those concerns, but I wasn't really sure what
Did, did we vet this through um, Bob Fisher at all?
It's a VLCT model policy, but I'll send it, once I, once you all decide on it, I'll send it to Bob before we are using it.
No, I, I don't. If we're using the VLCT, that, that means that it, that it has been vetted by attorneys because that's, your attorneys create those uh, create the model policies. So I'm, that's a good thing. Um, my concerns before were more about making sure that it was, if it's, if it's going to be some sign up, there's no uh, I, just, well, you, you know, any, if anybody can sign up for them, what are we inviting? So that's uh, you know, and so what we talked about was, does it have to be a 501(c)(3)? Does it have to be? Can it be a church? Can it be, you know, those kinds of things? But I, I would imagine that's addressed in the VLCTC model policy. And I'm sorry, I haven't read that policy. So I'm, I'm not quite sure what's in it.
Okay. I will um,
Can we
Look at it again and resend it to everyone?
And can we put it on the agenda for
Next.
The next meeting, let me know when.
It's night, November night?
Sounds great.
Right.
Please and thank you. Um, Conservation Commission, initial discussion.
Um, so we've had a lot of interest in the Conservation Commission, which is not an active commission in town currently. Um, however, I do feel like we have a strong interest at this point with the new land acquisition, um, to start that commission again. And before I start of, start advertising and pulling people together, um, I just want And before I start advertising and pulling people together, I just wanted your blessing.
Let's see, what is the purpose of the Conservation Commission? And I'm sorry, this is, I remember we do have some restrictions on that property anyway, just because of how we got the grant.
Yeah, so one of the duties of the Conservation Commission would be to consider all those, like, the agreements that we have with the Vermont Land Trust and those things, and to see how it works within the town. They do a lot of things that I have the list. It's not right in front of me, unfortunately.
Basically, they're, they're gonna be working within those restrictions.
Yeah.
To take in.
Planning, they.
End the trails, develop some.
Study the assets that are within the forest, the natural minerals, geographics, things, all that stuff.
My only concern is it might create more, it might create more restrictions, right? Because there are. Well, I guess we need to be very careful and we need to get a lot of town input on it. Who would be the members of the commission? Is that, is this like a planning commission where we start soliciting, soliciting interest from individuals in town to be part of that commission?
And then you would appoint them to the commission, the select board would.
Right, right. I don't think, I don't think they, I'm pretty positive, Bob, they wouldn't have any authoritative power to do anything. They could make recommendations and bring it back to the board, the same as the planning commission.
And they.
When they're doing the town plan type of stuff.
I would turn to them for help with the forest management plans and those.
Put the trail.
Outside of my purview, yeah. Trail management plan, Parks and Rec is interested in helping with that also. But the Conservation Commission would have more sort of expertise as far as conserving the land and the proper use of the land and that.
I would think that the Conservation Commission would kind of work hand in hand on that entire project.
Right.
I guess.
That would be the hope, yeah.
Yeah, I think I agree with all of that. I think it would be very important for the board to make sure that we have ideological diversity on that commission. And by, so it's not stacked with many people who think one way. If, I think some of you have heard me say it before, if we have absolute agreement on all our boards, committees, and commissions, we are leaving a large part of our constituency unrepresented. Because we don't have, you know, just the nature of every town in America, you don't have lockstep on anything. You really need to have voices from all sides on every one of our boards and commissions. If they're all coming out rubber stamping everything, then something's wrong, because somebody disagrees with just about everything. And they have to be heard too. That's my concern, is that it is ideologically diverse, that people from different perspectives are on that commission, just like they should be on the select board and just like they should be on the planning commission.
And it's a minimum of three members, maximum of nine. So I definitely have three interested parties, but that's why I sort of ask for your blessings, so that I can start putting the word out and hopefully get more people interested in it.
And once we get up and running, we can reach out to the state, because they've got different programs that I know they're more than willing to take in.
Right, it's sort of like an area that the planning commission doesn't touch, the DRB doesn't touch, Parks and Rec touches a little bit on it, but not really to the extent we're gonna need now that we have such a vast.
Got that property and the property office itself, you will.
Yeah, and we do, and we need to, you know, prioritize that.
Everybody forgot about that piece.
Yep.
You know, everybody, but a lot of people.
Yep.
I mean, my only, my only concern is, and I don't know how formal, this would probably be something we need to research out a little bit. So if we made it a nine-member commission, if they were gonna have a meeting and vote on anything, they'd have to have five members present. They'd have to have their quorum. So maybe we keep the number at, because we do have, historically, we have a difficult time getting the numbers. So if we kept the numbers to five or seven versus going into a nine.
About five and two alternate, possibly.
Jamie, well, that works perfect, right? Because you've got seven people, so you know, it gives an opportunity for seven people to be involved, but you really only need five to have a meeting and to vote. I like that idea. The nine concerns me, simply because of that, we've run into that in the past.
And that seemed to work on a lot of the boards.
I think that's a great idea. I think I totally agree with that. A five and two alternates would be great.
I think that was our excellent point, because you do need to get that quorum. One thing, they're not gonna have the kind of authority, so what they're voting on isn't binding. They're voting on what are they going to recommend to the board.
Right.
Right, so that's the only thing they should be voting on. And then the board should actually make the ultimate decision, because, you know, we're the ones that represent and answer to our electorate. So, I was gonna say about that, we need to make sure about how we're, can I add, what was the precipice, or what started the interest in having a conservation commission? Where did that interest come, start from?
So the land trust and then at the presentation that I offered at the library.
There was people that were interested.
When I talked about wards and commissions at the library, I was asked about the conservation.
So that would indicate that we're somewhat recruiting from a partisan group, which is why I had the concern about making sure we were ideologically diverse.
I was asked about a commission that's not active.
I think that conservation commission, Bob, has been in our book.
It's in the town report.
It's in the town report. It's been there historically for, I think, as long as I've been reading.
And I actually didn't even.
I get that, that's good.
Conservation Commission on my handout. It wasn't one that I even brought up, but I was asked about it.
What's the board's pleasure on moving forward with the Conservation Commission?
I don't have a problem with that.
I want to entertain a motion to move forward with trying to activate a Conservation Commission with a board of five people with two alternates. I'll make a motion for some of. Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, no.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. So carried.
And just so it's clear, this commission is open to anybody to apply to.
That's right.
That's correct.
Correct. Well, I think it's town resident.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, there should be a.
Should be resident.
Well, yeah, resident of town, but I mean, it's not like only the people Tara just spoke with.
Right, exactly. Okay, social service appropriations, town warning and ballot placement policy.
Okay, so over the years, well, last year, I know we talked a lot about the social service agencies that are on the ballot. And that that is a large sum of money that voters are approving every year. And last year, town meeting, we had some question about what is required for people to get on the ballot. And at some point over the years, the board had adopted a policy that allowed a social service agency to just get back on the ballot if they were on the previous year. So they only had to collect their signatures one time, essentially. It could have been ten, fifteen years ago. They collected their signatures of five percent of the voters, and now they're automatically on the ballot. The only way that changes is if they want to increase, they have to collect more signatures. I've reached out to the VLCT and I've done some research on how can we require more? Can we decrease the asking amounts? Can we? We cannot decrease asking amounts. We cannot leave them off the ballot if they have done their part as far as collecting the signatures. So then my next question was, can we require that they collect signatures every year? We can do that, but you would have to do away with your old policy of allowing them to just roll into the next year if they collected signatures one time.
That was prior to all of us.
That's, that is sort of the only thing we can do to change that, is to require social service agencies to put a little more work into it, to collect those signatures and do that every year, if that's what you decided.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was a pilot. I thought that was just during COVID, honestly, so.
No, so that is an actual policy that has been.
It's gotta be pretty dated.
Yeah. Don't say it has to be a lot.
It's a pretty dated policy.
And it's a policy that the VLCT says sometimes they adopt it and.
Yep.
Because it makes it easier, like, for me and Julie, for example, because.
You don't have to verify.
We don't have to verify signatures. So I told Julie, I'm really sorry if they change this, but I will help count signatures. Because she's the one, Julie is the one who has to check to make sure that they're all registered voters and.
It would have to be in the town. It wouldn't be county-wise, correct?
Right, they would have to be five percent of Pownell registered voters.
Right.
And what's that work out to?
Like a hundred and thirty, between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and fifty.
For them to put on the ballot?
Yeah.
So is the proposal to make it annual? Or?
I would think so.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I guess we have a couple of options, right? Where it is today is, once you're on, you're always there unless you're making a change. And then if you make a change, then you have to go back. Do we have the option of making it, make it a little bit easier on the staff, but every three years or something, you have to come back?
I think, yeah, if that's what you all chose to do, as long as it's clear in the policy, then yes.
I think, I think we do need to make it a little bit harder to spend, to spend public money. It shouldn't just be automatic, but, but a lot of these things are things that happen and recur. So make it a little bit easier if it was, if it was time box.
So I would think if we changed the policy, that it wouldn't be in effect immediately, because that's kind of a short notice, that we could put it in effect for two thousand and twenty-five. Because you're talking that they're gonna have to have the signatures.
Not really, because, no, because they would have to, like, so you can get your petitions.
Mid-January. End of January is the deadline, but I promised Julie I would not say end of January.
We could change the policy. It takes a little bit of time to change the policy anyway. By the time we vet it out there, you know, we look at, you know, what our policy is, vet it.
It's basically.
It's pretty simple.
If you do away with the old one, you're back to annual, unless you.
Unless you put like a three-year buffer or whatever.
It says three years. But I'm getting ready to now email all of the social service agencies and say, it's that time of year again, please send me your worksheet and your other stuff. So when I do that, I could say this year we're doing things differently, or we can do that next year.
So if we were to change this policy, just so that everyone's clear, including me, if we were to vote to do away with our current policy and put a new policy into effect. And we drafted a new policy for November ninth, right, and we voted on, you know, and I kind of like Bob's idea about a three-year update every, you know, every three years, rather than the one year. You know, and I'm not totally opposed to one year either, okay, because look, it is a lot of money.
Well, we could do three years.
And to be clear, sorry, to be clear, I'm not opposed to the one year either, but I was trying to strike that balance.
No, I understand.
I just wanted to make sure we knew we had options, that's all.
Right. Could we, could we put that policy into effect next, maybe not the ninth, we'd have to bring it in and have discussion and then send it to Bob Fisher, but put that policy into effect on the.
End of November.
Yeah, we wouldn't have a meeting on the twenty-third, because it would be Thanksgiving, whatever the next meeting after the ninth would be. We can do that, right, because we don't have to go through the sixty-day, that's an ordinance.
No.
No.
I just want, I want to make sure we have the right things going.
Because you have Christmas.
You know, make sure we all understand it, including me.
That's my only concern.
I have to get it all out to people anyways. I have to.
Well, but if we had it in place, if we had that new policy in place in November, right, the end of November around Thanksgiving, that gives outside agencies, social service agencies, December. And it gives them a minimum of six weeks.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, realistically, it would give them a minimum of six or seven weeks to get their signature. So I don't want to cut them short. I, you know, I understand what you're saying. I don't want to cut them short. I've got three weeks to get your signatures, or two weeks, or whatever it is. Somebody's got to work really hard.
Right.
Okay, I don't want to do that.
Right.
But I do want to make a little more accountability for some of it. I think we're on the right track with that.
Thinking about having a special meeting next week anyways, so that we can live a different department head, sorry.
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
But because I can't fit all our department heads on as fast, I'd like, so maybe I can bring the policy back next week and then final approval is like the ninth and then.
You want to, you want to put language in that way, and we can take a look at it?
I'd like to, I'd like to just hold off on doing anything with that current policy.
Okay.
But I would like to see a new policy proposed for our next meeting, whether it's next week or November ninth.
Okay.
And I'd like to see it. What's the board's question? Do you want to see it with a one year, an annual, or do you want to see it with a three-year or two-year?
I think two is fair, but I think enacting it with such short notice for this year is a little unfair. I think starting it for next year and then requiring it every two years would be, to me, that's how I would go about it. That's just my.
So you wouldn't change the power, you would?
Not for this election cycle, but for the one after.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking.
Only because by the time, we're gonna be like, basically throwing this out to people, and by the time really notifications get to people, they're gonna have four, maybe five weeks to get signatures in.
Yeah, I would think it would be done with six or seven weeks, realistically. Well, I see your point, you know, totally.
That way they can't say that we, like, changed it unexpectedly and bombarded them and it's not fair and all that nonsense.
But we could also, this year, ask for more detail as far as budgeting their budgets and that stuff that our voters asked for.
Right.
Right.
All right.
Perfect.
Sounds good. Thank you, Tara.
Thank you very much.
Okay, looks like we're into executive for personnel.
Make a motion, we enter into executive session for personnel.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bye-bye.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. I want to entertain a motion to come out of executive.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bye-bye.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. I want to entertain a motion to enter executive personnel for zoning administrator.
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bye-bye.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I.
Recording.
Motion to come out of executive for personnel zoning administrator?
I'll second.
So moved.
All those in favor? Angie, I.
Bye-bye.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Okay, can you please go get Mike? Bear with us for one second, please.
He's out there sleeping. I would be.
Sleeping?
Yeah, if I had to sit out there that long, I'd be taking a nap.
You should be out there working. All right, Mike is rejoining us. Thank you. Can I entertain a motion?
So per the.
Recommendations of the planning commission?
Reappoint Michael Geiger to the zoning administrator.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Angie, I.
Bye-bye.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike abstained.
Thank you. You can take over the mic.
Good, now I can go into another executive. I want to entertain a motion to go into executive for another personnel matter.
So moved.
All in favor?
Angie, I.
Bye-bye.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. Personnel.
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Bye-bye.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I. Is there any public comment here?
Hi, guys.
Hi, guys, um, um, Jim Coase's Mason Hill Road. Hey, just one question on the, um, new road that was, um, a, a, a name that was on there for that lane. Is that a current road, town road, that's been approved, or is it something new?
It's, um, something new. It was more or less like a driveway that had one house, but I believe two more are being added. Um, so that, uh, is the threshold, three houses on one lane.
It's, it's a private, it's a private road.
Right. Okay, so it, it is a private road. Okay, just, and, um, just going back to your, um, ballot articles, I mean, I know I had brought this up before, and I was just wondering if we can maybe incorporate this now that you're having the discussion, but there is a form out there that, that's the nine ninety, that kind of explains, um, what each organization, nonprofit organization, um, has for their programs. It also kind of gives a, a listing of their, um, assets, liabilities, and how much is, um, compensated to, um, officials and employees. And I was just wondering if we could somehow incorporate that into this whole discussion of, um, each year, figuring out, um, if it should be put onto the ballot, just to make sure that the townspeople understand where any organization stands at that point. Um, everything changes. I know there is an organization out there that I've seen a ballot article, it, it kind of disappeared, but it was on the table looking for close to a hundred thousand dollars additional. And, um, it, it, it's, it's just surprising on whether something can be brought up to the voters that it states that this will be a one-time ballot article, or if it's something that's going to be continued over years and years and years. I'm all for organizations that were voluntary for the town, like the fire departments and everything, but there seems to be an organization out there that has become almost regional. Um, it's got profits coming from outside, and I just don't want to be the one responsible to, um, kind of subsidize that organization when it's serving, um, the public in other towns. Um, I think other towns should be part of the whole thing, and I, I brought this up at the town meeting, I'm sure, so I just think a, a, a good discussion needs to happen concerning some of these organizations and what monies they're asking for, so. Thank you very much, and you have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, just, uh, my, my public comment, and I hope you don't mind me piggybacking on yours, Jim, but, uh, that sounds like a really good idea. I'm not familiar with the nine ninety forum, but let's, let's get familiar with it. If that does lay it all out, and I think it's a perfectly reasonable ask that, uh, that a voter knows when they're voting on these ballot articles, that this is a recurring one, this is a one-time one. That's a really good suggestion also.
Thank you, yep.
Can we, can we add that into the discussion of our, um, that policy, you know, the whole thing we were gonna talk about?
Yep.
Either at the next meeting on the ninth, whatever we have it scheduled for.
Yep.
Please. Thank you, Tara. Any more public comment, Hannah? I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any more discussion? All was in favor?
Angie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Jamie, I.
Mike, I.